I'd like to call our budget work session to order on this Tuesday, February 16th, beginning at 6:00. I will start to my left and have each board member introduce themselves, please.
Sarah Chase Falmouth.
Pamela Young Garrisonville. I think her left was starting with me. Just checking if I missed it.
Holly Hazard Hartwood.
Susan Randall George Washington.
Elizabeth Warner Griffiths-Widewater.
Tricia Healy Raquel Distra.
All right, all of us are here. I know that Ms. Hollerback is on her way. She was coming down 95 last I had heard from her. So I know she will be joining us as soon as she makes her way in. I do not believe anybody will be participating electronically this evening, so we can skip over that part. Is there a motion to approve the work session agenda? Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will be, our only discussion item for this evening is the FY '22 funding request that was presented by Dr. Kizner. He presented it late January. We also have had a work session on Saturday in this room. At that time, we were to bring forward different questions or comments that we had for board members in front of us. There are some responses. If you see the papers in front of us. I thought I would, unless there, Dr. Kizner, any opening comments?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Fulmer, I'll give you the same courtesy.
Nope.
Let's start. I'm sorry? Come on up.
I tried to respond to even questions from the board members. So we tried to combine some of the questions into one if we could. If we happen to miss one, just let us know and we can get you that response before Tuesday's
I will start with, one of the questions that seemed to come up in several areas was some questions about social workers. So I'm going to sort of stick with that topic. I don't know if Dr. Fulmer wants to come forward or if Dr. Kizner. I just feel like that's sort of a large topic that came up in several areas. If anybody wants to sort of go over the, what I would call setting the stage where we are now and maybe where we need to be. I know many board members mentioned in the public comments that we received and I know in our emails about mental health being a concern for parents as we return our students to school. And this was one area I felt like we, that was brought up in a variety of ways. So, Dr. Fulmer, if you would like to give us sort of the overview and then, board members, if there's any specific requests, we'll go from there.
Sure, sure. So I'll go ahead and just provide a quick overview and then whatever questions you have, you can go ahead and ask at that time. So I know the proposal or the consideration is to have one social worker per building. And we've talked about this over the last couple of years to eventually get to that point. So we were looking at a phased approach to getting those social workers onboard for us. We currently have five schools that have a full-time social worker now currently. And those are the social workers that are part of the typical or troubled program that I mentioned to you all back in the, I think it was the fall where I did my presentation on social emotional learning. And then eventually we want to grow, not only for the typical and trouble, but we also want to grow to add another social worker per building moving forward. But those are the only schools right now that have a full-time social worker. The rest of them are itinerant, they travel amongst buildings, and we currently have 25.4 social workers. Now, in some of our buildings, we have additional social workers through title funding, but those social workers cannot supply the services that our current social workers are doing. So those 25.4 are separate than those title funding social workers, and that's up to the building if they want to assign those social workers to their building. So if we do get more social workers, we would have to have the conversation with buildings and then with Title I, with Roxanna, to see if they still want that additional social work support or if they need to relocate that funding somewhere else. Now again, that's not our department, but just letting you know that there are some additional social workers in those buildings. Now, because of the request to consider adding on more social workers, we would need 15.6 additional social workers, not in addition to the one that we've already been considered to be added to the budget. That would include that, to have one social worker per building and per program. So that would be each ECSE site, Stafford High Public Day, Phoenix Center, attendance, so on and so forth. So 15.6 total. If we were looking at just having one social worker per secondary and then maybe slowly phasing in more social workers at the elementary level, we're looking at adding five social workers per secondary and then we can slowly add more in the coming years, if that's something we would be interested in doing. Now, someone also asked, why counselors versus social workers? And that's actually a really good question, because they do share a lot of responsibilities in regards to social emotional support for the building, providing guidance for parents, especially during this pandemic, providing resources for students. However, their jobs are also different in that the counselor provides a lot of academic guidance for not only the building with master scheduling, but to students, as well as providing lessons and so on. There's a lot of different things that they're responsible for doing, as well as they are part of the SOQ. So we are required as a school division to meet that SOQ, which is one for 325 students. Unfortunately, social workers do not have an SOQ. They are working on that. The state is working really, really hard at adding on additional SOQs for not only social workers, but for psychs as well, because they are recognizing that these social emotional support staff are very important and critical with our efforts to provide that social emotional support for our students and our staff. One of the things that I keep mentioning in all of my budget meetings is all of our buildings have numerous committees and numerous teams, risk assessment team, suicide assessment team, mental health professionals, CIST team. And everyone always asks, well, who's on those teams? It's the same staff. Every building has the same staff on each of those teams and they're pulled in many different directions. So for our staff that are itinerant, it would be really helpful if those staff could be at the building if we can get one per site. And psychs is another staff member, again, that'll be for a different day, but we're looking at getting at least one psych per building. So I'm available for any questions. That was kind of just an overarching summary and overview, but I'm available for any questions that you have.
Dr. Chase, start us off.
Yeah, so I recall that the state had been working to redefine or constrain counselors, that they had to spend X amount of time really doing more counseling work rather than administrative work like scheduling. So any updates on where that is?
No, Dr. Chase. They're currently working on that. As I mentioned, there's a lot of different committees and different mandates that they're currently working on to provide that support for our counselors, so they aren't pulled in many different directions, but nothing has been finalized. I was actually, funny you mention it, I was actually called to be on a committee at the state level when COVID hit last year. This is something that they were working on. They asked me to be on the committee. COVID hit and I haven't heard anything since, but I can definitely follow up and get you some more information on that.
Yeah, so I mean, I just wonder what happens when that happens? Like, are we going to need to hire additional administrative staff to pick up the slack? I mean, those duties don't go away just because counselors no longer ask to do them. So just wondering.
So Dr. Fulmer, if I understand your response to Dr. Chase is there was work being done on that, but to your knowledge, that has not been incorporated in the governor's, any of the budget proposals going forward, that there's been a redefinition as part of the budget language?
Correct, correct, yeah. And I could definitely look into that to see if there's been any progress with that, but no, to my knowledge.
We would probably know by now, Dr. Kizner, if that had been re-character or if positions had been reformulated, characterized? I'm not sure what word I'm looking for. Would that be correct? I would think, Dr. Kizner, you would have heard that those had been...
Address that real quickly. That was set aside because it was considered an unfunded mandate. The school systems were going to have to provide clerical type of other supports, and I think Dr. Fulmer addressed it well. We have tried through other means to alleviate that type of work, so they could do more direct counseling and career counseling and high school, I mean, college readiness counseling.
Okay. Anybody else? Dr. Warner.
Thank you, Dr. Fulmer. I was curious, is there a benefit to starting in high school versus elementary school? If we were to add more social workers, would there be a greater advantage to doing that at the secondary school level or at the elementary school level?
You know, that's actually a really good question. I would say, there's probably pros and cons to that. Two reasons I think we should start in the secondary level. The main reason is our counselors are so encumbered with that academic side of the counseling, career planning, graduation, getting them ready for their career goals, so on and so forth. So we want to make sure that we have other staff that are able to provide that mental health support for our students and our staff and that training. The other reason is, it would be a budget reason, is we don't need as many to fully staff the secondary level and then we can slowly staff our elementary level, so the caseloads are higher at that secondary level. So that would be a reason to start there. But I could see the pros being to start with elementary as well, but the caseloads aren't as high as compared to the secondary, per site.
Ms. Hollerback?
Remind me again, do we have social workers and counselors working on IEPs?
Yes and no. We have more social workers working with our students with IEPs. So we typically have, per the regs, only three staff can provide counseling services in the IEP, psychs, social workers, and guidance counselors. We currently use the psychs and the social workers. We don't use as many counselors. However, we do have, oh, like check-ins. So we do have those embedded in the IEPs, but that's available to any student, so we very rarely put in the IEPs. It's more psychs and social workers.
Okay, so currently for the 504s, we have gen ed teachers that are managing those plans, correct?
Yeah, so we have gen ed teachers, nurses, counselors, other staff, special case managers.
Right, but for the most part, the lead managers are the gen ed teachers. They volunteer to pick up a caseload, correct?
Correct.
So with the new positions that we have coming in, will that help take some of the burden off of our general education teachers? Or are they just going to be solely responsible for the IEP lane and not go into the 504?
Yeah, sure, great question. So we've actually had a committee that we've established in the beginning of the school year, because we had that 504 coordinator that you all are graciously to give us, which is going really, really well. Crystal Sis is doing a great job. And we're starting the committee and there's three topic areas that the committee is focusing on. The teacher, because they are going to be the ones that are going to be implementing the plans, the 504 plan manager, which is, some of them are gen ed teachers, some of them are counselors, nurses, as well as the 504 coordinator. And what we're doing is we're taking a look at those need areas very specifically to what you're mentioning in regards to how are they plan managing those students. And one of the things that we've noticed is, A, each of the buildings, because we did a survey, each of the buildings is recognizing that these are students that need support. And these are students with 504 plans, with disabilities, that they need some help. So the management piece isn't so much the issue, it's the training that comes along with it to make sure that they are consistently implementing the plans and they're staying in compliance. So currently, right now, we don't have any additional positions that are added on, but we are looking at increasing the level of training for our staff, as well as adding on additional paperwork clerical support at the high school level. In fact, goes, well, we're going to trickle that down to the other areas, because that's one of the areas that we noticed they need some additional support on, is more of the paperwork, because the 504 plans are not as extensive as an IEP. Typically, they meet once a year and that's it, unless there's a triennial or something comes up. It's mainly just implementing those accommodations. So we are currently assessing that. We're actually meeting again next week and I'll continue to provide you guys with updates on that.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
I could just add one, to go back to the question of counseling versus social workers. Social workers by their training look at more system change. So even though we're talking about assigned to a building, it would not be unusual if a child is struggling and he or she's in a high school, you may see middle school and elementary siblings also having similar needs. So social workers tend to work with the family, other outside agencies. So even though I recognize the notion of assigning it to a school, I would also suggest sometime you cross boundaries, because you're really working with a structure of a family and sometimes outside agencies.
That was one of my thoughts, is that it was more of a whole child, whole family approach, where a counselor is pretty limited to just that child.
Any other questions in the social work counselor area?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I still sort of, I mean, I understand kind of the rationale for, there are five high schools and so you could do five social workers at one time, but I do sort of still wonder a little bit about the concept of if you hit a child early, the impact is so much greater. And so, you know, it might be worth thinking about five elementary schools one year and then, you know, getting the elementary school up first, but that's just a thought.
Ms. Healy?
If we're not able to put one in each school, I would like to see a plan on identifying the schools that have the greater need, because while it might be a good target to have one per school, some schools are going to have a different population and not as great a need for the social workers. So if we're able to add some, that's what I would look at, whether it be the high school, the middle school, or the elementary. And it's interesting hearing the discussion about the high school versus the elementary. My thought would be, maybe we need to start in the middle schools. I mean, middle school years are very, very difficult, you know, for lots of, you know, young adults.
Those five would make sure that every, both middle school and high school would have at least one social worker.
Yeah, well, but we're not, this is just me speaking for myself. I don't see us having one point, what, how many, 5 million or however many million we need to add one per school. While we have one focus teacher, which I completely supported having a full-time focus teacher, and I completely support having a full-time, you know, other dedicated specialist to schools, so that the students know they're there, the counselors, I'm not so sure that the need is the same across the board for every one of our elementary schools, every one of our middle schools, and every one of our high schools for a social worker. So if we're going to be able to have, meet, you know, a partial amount of new hires, not one per school, what I'm suggesting is look at the schools that need it the most, rather than the level, whether it's high, middle, or elementary. You know, where are the schools, I assume, that the ones we have full time, you know, are the highest need, but there's probably another tier of needs based on the population of students, you know, in those schools. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get you to clarify something that you just said, and maybe I misunderstood what you just said? Did you just say that if we added five more to the secondary, that would cover all middle and all high?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I thought it was, all right, never mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is it not 5.6 according to this?
I'm sorry, yes, 5.6, I apologize, yes.
Right, if everybody would look on page two of the, I'll call it the questions document, there, we can look at it. But Dr. Fulmer, you talked about our Title I schools, which in Stafford, our Title I schools are all elementary, correct? So you were saying, though, that some of them have chosen to use funds to fund a social worker in their building?
Correct.
Like I said, I can't give you a blank check and I know that your boss is sitting to your right, so I ask this question with him fully sitting here. There's a lot to be balanced here. Do we start at the top? Do we start at the bottom? Do we start by need? You and Dr. Kizner, where would you have us go? Draw everybody's attention to the one here and it gets us one of those "all" statements, but I will say to Ms. Healy's point, have we hit the need points? Does that make any sense, what I'm saying?
Yes.
Guidance for us, or Dr. Kizner, I can ask it to you. I won't put Dr. Fulmer on the spot.
I mean, I really appreciate this conversation. I kind of maybe look at it a little differently. I think there are some high need schools that could benefit from a full-time social worker, but I also feel like we would limit the ability to help a child and a family by just assigning it to schools without thinking that other schools that may not have a social worker would not benefit by having that service when a child is struggling. So I guess, I almost would like to see a few social workers, if that's what we're looking at, not be assigned to a school, but to be assigned to cases based on some staffing protocol. Because it, I understand high-risk schools, but you could have a high-risk school kid in a very low-risk school, and they should, they should have the benefit of a social worker. And the other thing I would just, as I mentioned earlier, you know, doing this for many years, a lot of, a lot of things that we see in a school are across more than one child. And if you really want to focus on helping that child and the family, then it's not school-specific. So I guess in a nutshell, I would say it's a hybrid. It would be a blend of school base and central office base, or division base.
What sort of number, if you took a hybrid approach, would, do you think would be a way? I mean, I know we probably are looking at a phased approach, perhaps not, but let's be honest. I do think this is an area that we have heard a lot from families of mental health concerns and needs. So I think we are looking for guidance to do the best for our families and if it, you know, we come, many of us come from a one-per-school. We've done that with, Ms. Healy mentioned the focus teacher, making sure we had enough music, everyone had, so it was a very one-per, or however many per school. So we are in that mode and I think we're open to a different model. I think we're all trying to get to the best way to support our students. And I think Ms. Young has got to.
Yeah, before Dr. Kizner made his comment, I was really going to make my comment in terms of, I wouldn't look at it as just a need. A need is important, but it's more like, what is the criteria that you're planning on using to say that a school will be needing a social worker? And it goes in line with what Dr. Kizner is talking about. You can't just say, oh, these schools have a need, because you just don't know when the need is going to be necessary. Because that's, it's not like you're putting a focus teacher in every school, because we know that's equity, that's what we want. We want every school to have gifted or a certain program, IB, or, you know, whatever that is. That's not what social work and the counselors are going to be doing, because it's by need, but also by when they come in and when they're needed. And so having a program, I'm not saying that they need to be in the central office necessarily, but to have a group looking at the number of students that we have, the same way I feel about ESOL, you know, it's, we're not going to have enough, but we have kids that are in need in every school. And when the need arises for them, to help them, that's when we need to send them out.
Yeah. Can I respond to that?
I'm going to let you answer that question.
Great question, Mrs. Young. And the first thing that we look at is the caseloads per building. So we don't just automatically say, all right, we're just going to add it to this school because they have more students. It's going to be based on the need. It's going to be based on the needs of the families. It's going to be based on the needs of the resources that maybe the teachers need to support their students, to support their families. Because when we look at social emotional support and providing resources and working with families and building relationships, it doesn't fall on one person. It falls on numerous staff members. And if those staff members need that training and need that support, then we want to make sure that we have the right people in line to do that. So that's what we look at. We look at caseload numbers and we look at the amount of resources that those families will need in any specific building. Now, if I can have my way, the baseline would be one social worker per building and then we can add from there. Because I guarantee we're going to have some buildings that might need more than just one social worker based on the needs of that particular building. But I think if we can get to one social worker per building, so we can, we can work on relationship building between that social worker and not only the building, but the families and everyone else that comes and goes out of that building, so they know who that social worker is. Because if a, if a social worker is needed right now and it's, they're sharing it between another building and they're not there for that particular day, they have to track them down, they have to try to call them, they have to get them to come back. So it just make it very difficult for those social workers, because they want to feel part of that family as well. And this has no implication on what the school is doing or not doing, because they're doing the best they can with that itinerant staff. It's the social worker wanting to be there full-time. So that's what we look at and it's a great question.
Just to follow up on that, that's a beautiful thing to hear. So I work in technology, but I worked in the hospital field for many, many, many years. And one of the things, I know they do it somehow in the school system, so when, when something goes on, you know, fire alarm, there's a bunch of people know that they need to get to that location and that every single one of them have a duty to perform. And I think that if that's the case, based on the need of the child, you have the counselor or those sociologists or, you know, just a group that is going to help and maybe forming something like that to go out and get that job done, depending on what it is, that would be nice.
Absolutely, yep.
Ms. Hazard? Dr. Chase was next, and Ms. Rado.
Yeah, so I mean, I still have the sort of a question that I brought up before of, I absolutely understand that we have concerns about mental health, but I think we're all expecting that there may be academic help that's needed as well. And so for those children who are struggling readers, because they didn't get enough, enough instruction this year, or struggling with math, so what, and this question's for Dr. Kizner rather than for you and Mr. Fulmer. So what are we doing to address those kinds of needs? I mean, do we, do we have additional people trained in the Orton-Gillam method, or do we have additional PARAs that we're planning to deploy, or just what is, and maybe it's too soon, I don't know, it's just a question.
So, again, I, I recommended a budget to you. And, and there were requests for additional social workers, which I did not move forward. Not that I don't think they have great value. And, and the focus, again, is twofold. Obviously, one was the equity initiative and second was salary and benefits, okay? So I guess what I'm, to answer your question about, all the other things are truly important. You may be saying, why don't we have more reading specialists in the budget? Why don't we have, you know, math support? And the answer is, I would like to have all. But I also brought you a budget that I thought was reasonable under the information that I had available. Now, the trainings, I know we've done Wilson reading training, we've done Orton-Gilliam training, and there's a lot of training going on in that area. It may be too early, but not really, because even without COVID, we still have kids that struggle in the content area. This may sound like a, you know, I'm going back to the 504 way we approach it. I think it's really hard to give you a number as much as, you know, part of me says, you know, I was actually glad that we had this many social workers in our system. I didn't really realize that. I still believe, though, and maybe Dr. Fulmer and I allowed to disagree, I'm not convinced that I really see it as a building base, because other things that social workers do, they do they do program evaluation, they do group-specific. My youngest daughter, that I think many of you know, we adopted when she was in Winchester City Schools, they, I remember her participating with a social worker that had children who were adopted and abused, and she, the kids from the elementary school were pulled out. So I guess I don't want to limit, like we have school counselors. I think that's great to be in one building. So I kind of almost feel like, have a few school counselors, I mean, social workers, and then come back and say, this is what we learned from this one-year journey, and then build upon that. And it's maybe better than just throwing out a number.
Okay, Ms. Randall, I'm sorry. It's okay. So in looking at how many social workers that we have that you say are mostly itinerant, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So in other words, these people all are ready to be put where needed? Is that my understanding? Twenty-five of them? Is that correct?
We have 25.4 currently, social workers.
Are not building-specific, but rather counting?
Of those 25.4, I was just on that page, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 are full-time.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. And then, but the rest can be anywhere we need them?
Correct.
Okay. So we already have that system in place, and so we were just, if we were to, well, that's not hard. But the other piece that I want to also say, just having been a high school teacher before, we have some learning loss, for sure, with some of these kids. But the other piece that I want to remember is that while we are trying to maybe think about adding PARAs or adding specialists, that really what is probably going to be most effective are the classroom teachers. Because they know when they get those kids in the room, either how to help them, because it could just be that they needed that face-to-face, and we're unable to have that face-to-face. And that's just my thought about it, because, I mean, I know the math is something, you know, we want people to be at a certain level. I understand that. And we have, they have goals and for grade levels and all of those things. But I also want to not lose focus in the fact that it's not, might not be a person or a position or an extra, but rather just trusting that a classroom teacher is very professional and knowing how to find where a kid is absent, and either get them help if that's what they need, or just teach them in a way that moves them. And so I just want to remember that our teachers are excellent professionals for this, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear. Part of my concern is just this theory that there's a critical period for acquiring literacy skills. And so if we have children who, for a year, have potentially not gotten what they need, if that window is closing, they may not get that skill. So that's what I, that's where my concern is.
I do appreciate that classroom teachers sometimes are the most first access for a student. But I also know that in dealing with high school students is, you know, sometimes you get students that come with unique, especially in high school, come with unique challenges that sometimes need other support, too. So I kind of like the idea of adding the smaller number, the 5.6, making sure that our high schools are covered, middle schools are covered, and seeing where we are.
Let me just say one thing. So, you know, we're doing a lot of assessments, going back to learning loss. And fairness to teachers, many teachers would tell you, these kids have been in their classrooms for many years, and they're struggling. And often, when we do diagnostic assessments, then we want to say, like when you go to a medical doctor, you've got to do a diagnostic assessment, then they refer you out. So sometimes you do have to refer. It's not at all taking anything away from the teacher. And I think in the notion of, you know, most teachers will tell you what they struggle the most with is the kid's social emotional, you know, because that's very overt. That's what they see in the classroom. That's what they see when they don't come to the classroom. So in many ways, we are providing another level of support for the classroom teacher besides the student and their family.
I'm going to have everybody look on page nine, since we're still in the counselor, at the response to question, let's see, 25. The question was asked, what schools are currently without one full-time counselor? Dr. Hammer, if I understand this, I mean, you all, right, all schools right now have two full-time counselors.
At least two, yes.
Okay. So when that-
Because it ranges. I'm sorry to cut you off, Ms. Hazle. It just ranges based on the number of students in each building. So it's lower at elementary, and as they go up, it's more counselors.
Okay, so all schools have at least two full-time counselors, but that does not mean that they only serve that school? Is that what you're saying? And I'm sorry, maybe I-
No, it's okay.
I just must not be able to read this correctly.
It's okay.
Can you talk me through it?
Yeah. So currently, where we stand, we have at least two full-time counselors, pre-K to 12 and at the Phoenix Center.
Okay.
We have some schools that have more than two counselors. So for example, we have some high schools that might have six. Again, it's all based on the number of students in each of those buildings, because it's back to that SOQ. As we mentioned, our best practice right now is to not have traveling counselors. So in order to do that and meet the SOQ, we would have to add on those eight counselors. If we just wanted to stick to the 2.4, which matches that SOQ, we are going to have traveling counselors there. So I wanted you all to see that, that if we did this, these are the buildings that are going to have itinerant counselors, if we wanted to counter based on the number of social workers we got.
Okay, I was reading it correctly. I just wanted to confirm, make sure that everybody had seen that piece. So before we move on, Dr. Warner, you were saying there was a number that came to mind for you for social workers. I believe you said five, but maybe I misheard.
I like the idea of the 5.6 social workers. And then I just, I just know that many students struggle with problems that aren't necessarily related to their academics, but it influences their academic learning. I've worked with students who were emancipated at 16, and it's a challenge when you have to, you know, worry about things like rent and laundry and buying groceries and your academic success. I know we have many students that are English as a second language, who have come here in their teens and are pretty much on their own. So I look at it, I think, a little differently, and I see those, I see there's, there could be an important role for those, that staff. So I think that, I think it would, it might be premature to say that we want them in all schools, but I would like to see, I'd like to see us start working towards that.
So, Mr. Fulmer, the cost for that? I'm going with like that first page, but I just have it rounded as a 5.0. And I wasn't sure if that number included the one that was already in the budget. Don't go far.
So if you can clarify, are we adding five more to what's already in the budget, which is two? Are we getting up to the five, 5.6 total combined cumulative?
I was just trying to get some idea of costing-
It's roughly $75,000 to $80,000 per social worker that we add, including all benefits and health insurance.
So the two in the budget, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I thought it was one, but it must be two. If there were three social workers added?
There's two in the budget right now.
Correct. And then, let's say we were going for the total of five, including those in there, the Dr. Kizner, I'll be nice to you. I'll give it, and then if you want to pun it to Dr. Hammer. Do you see that those could be used in a beneficial way, in some support, to Ms. Young's point, and to others? Maybe not pin you down, it's going to be right here, but knowing the needs that have been identified, at least in emails I'm receiving and in public comment? So, but, you know, you are the expert, but I think we're open to it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, again, 11 social workers were requested. So I have to trust my principals and others that they saw a real need. And again, I see the need. I don't want to say I don't see the need. I do think the question about five, I'm still a little unclear. Is that 5.6 included two, or is that 5.6 plus two?
No, it's, it would be, well, it would be 5.6, including the one. The other one was for Kathy Massey's program. So it would be 6.6, right?
So it would be 4.6 to get to the 5.6, because one of them is assigned to early childhood.
So we would need 6.6 social workers total in the budget, including the one that's for early childhood head start. And that would be, that, the addition of the 4.6 that we're adding to the two that we already have would be a cost of $345,000.
Yes, Ms. Healy, I'm sorry.
That's all right. It's nice to sit on the end. Have we used any or projected using any of our, I'll call it CARESAC money or COVID money, for social workers for the coming year?
We have not.
And is there, is all, have you have plans for all that money, or is there any in reserve?
So tentatively, yes, based on what we pulled out of the operating budget already to cover the PPE, the air filters and things like that, addition to, in addition to the online learning coordinators that we're paying for, for two years as well.
So that means it's all allocated?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we get a list of that? Just because I know I get asked questions occasionally about, I think you may have sent it to us, or we've gotten, you know, several different lists, but, you know, the amount of money that was allocated to us and where we'd either spent it or projected to spend it in the coming year? Is that something that would be really hard to put together?
Yeah, I can send you, it was included in the mid-year report that I just, it was a lot of data that I gave you, broken out a couple different ways, but it was in the mid-year report. I can send it to you again.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. It may be even something we want to consider putting up on the website, because a lot of people are asking, you know, what are you doing with the money that you receive? And I think that would show, you know, where it's gone. But, I mean, if there were any funds available, I would think this would be a good, a potential use of them for the social workers. I understand there's none left.
Yeah. I think that's a qualified expense, but we could look it up.
Really? Even if it's a need that has been generated because of the COVID? I mean, I don't know. I haven't looked at the criteria. But if the criteria is to help you meet, you know, the additional cost of, in effect, doing business, that's what I would say this would be.
Yeah.
No, well, just parts of the learning loss and just the mental health. I think the children's mental health in coming to school is, you know, part of our responsibility to address, so that they can do the learning. If they're not mentally healthy, then they're not going to be able to learn.
Yeah, it would go back to Ms. Randall's question, could we have more teachers to support kids? And it just, the federal government has a list of what qualifies for a stimulus, and we'll double, triple-check. I don't think this meets it. The other thing I would just offer you, if the objective is to continue to build, when the stimulus money ends in 2023, then this would be an add-on expense that you would have to absorb locally.
Well, perhaps if the need is greater now than it was before, if we address the need and things get back to the new normal, the need won't be as great. So just because we're adding them in now, to me, doesn't say that we're going to necessarily need to maintain it. I mean, we'd have to evaluate to see, you know, what the needs are, you know, each year. I mean, they may get greater, but they may lessen as well.
All right, so let's look at then that page two, where it showed the Level 1 is the 2.6 that are currently in the budget, correct, Mr. Fulmer? On that page two.
2.0.
The 2.6 is what you need to add to have one in each of the high schools?
Okay. So that's an addition to what's already there. I must be the one that's just not getting this. So maybe I need somebody else to take it over. I'm confused, because I know we have some in the budget, and we, I'm just trying, okay, so the 2.6 would be in addition to the ones that are currently proposed in the budget?
Correct. But, so it would actually be 6.6 total, including the two that are in the budget? Because one of the ones in the budget is for early childhood head start, which is separate than what George is proposing on these Q and As. So in the budget, we would have a total of new social workers of 6.6.
All middle schools and one elementary school. Because this says, because I'm just looking at the chart, 5, so 5.6 is not correct, 6.6.
Yeah, as, and I'm sorry to cut you off, Dr. Warner, but as we've been explaining, it's a big puzzle. So, right, so when we get one social worker, it's not just adding one social worker, because we might have one social worker that's at, I'm making this up, is at Conway for two days, and then another social worker then goes over to Anthony Burns for a day. So it's one big puzzle. So if we got the 5.6, it would all work out that every middle school, every high school would have one social worker, and one elementary school would have a full-time social worker, just because of the puzzle, just because of the number of positions that we have. So, and as Chris was just saying, so we would need 5.6 total, plus the addition of the one for the ECSE, so 6.6 total, not 8.8 or anything like that, just 6.6 total.
And Chris, the additional cost of that, I'm sorry, I know you were trying to tell me, and I was not being able to do math, so I got lost. Is there a feeling on the board that that is something we would like to at least put in like the column, or something we would like to consider adding to the budget? We don't, we do not vote tonight? It's more, is this, is the 5.6 total, 6.6? Sorry. Something we would like to at least put as a placeholder of what we would like to potentially fund?
Okay. So of those 6.6, one is definitely going to Ms. Massey, and the other 5.6 would be itinerant, more or less? Or would they be assigned?
Yeah, that's what I, it's a big puzzle. So ideally, there would be one social worker at each middle and each high, to say that each of these ones that we bring up, we might hire a social worker that prefers elementary. So that person would be split between two buildings. It's just going to be contingent on their interest level. But in the end, every middle and high school will have one full-time social worker, and then the rest will be funneled to elementary.
So really, it's dependent on caseload, correct? So that's why the puzzle is hard to put together?
And we only have so many-
There's no picture.
And we only have so many social workers to go around.
I do want to just reinforce what Dr. Warner said. I really would respectfully ask that, if your goal is to put one in a building, then that's one direction we'll go. If your goal is to serve children, families, and sisters, then come with a number that you would like us to put for more social workers. And then I would ask Dr. Hammer and his group to work, what would be the best way to utilize their services?
Is that-
I personally endorse the 6.6. I just think that it gives us better coverage throughout the system, apparently. And I just know from personal experience that many students can benefit, because it does address problems and situations that don't necessarily, can't be addressed necessarily by teachers and counselors, because it gives them external resources and such.
I think the idea is that we put it in, we get them, and then Dr. Kizner and his team allocate them to where it's needed the most. So I don't know why we keep chasing our tail. If we put it on and it doesn't work, then we have to reevaluate. But I think for the current, we just, let's just get it on there.
Okay, so it seems that there is a consensus to add a certain number, and then is that, okay, so- So on Tuesday, we will have something coming back with regard to a recommendation regarding the social workers, Ms. Young.
Yeah, just for the sake of time, I know we spend a lot of time on just social worker. But I just wanted to know how this, how you plan on breaking this out in terms of questions that we have that we just want clarification on versus the questions that, or statements that are in here that are adding either positions or whatever it is that will make change to the current budget? Can we like separate and make sure that we at least get those handled? And I'm not sure if there's any more in here that I didn't see.
I've got a.
See what I'm asking?
Yeah, no, all of tonight is, is trying to come up from the board, what additional, either additions. I have not heard any deletions so far, so it was more what additions were. So social workers and counselors seem to be a big area of discussion in an addition area. So I feel like we've gotten that nailed down.
So I see that we have 11 vacancies in counselors, psychologists and social workers. So do we have all our social worker positions currently filled or are we still looking for social workers?
Currently, we don't typically have a hard time hiring social workers. This year was a unique year. So we currently have two social workers that we're contracting out. However, throughout the course of this year, we actually got two social workers that want to stay on for next year. So we worked out an arrangement because we have some social workers that are out for medical reasons that they're on helping. And then we're going to, because we've already interviewed them and we want to bring them on board, so we typically do not. Sykes is a different story. We do have about, I think, I, I don't have the number here in front of me. I apologize, Dr. Chase. But it's about six psychologists that we're contracting out right now. And then counselors ebbs and flows, but we have over 90 counselors and we typically stay pretty, pretty much staffed. So social workers will not be an issue.
So why are we having to contract out psychologists? Is that because we're not offering enough? Or is it just, I mean, why are we able to get them through, through contracting services, but we're not able to actually hire them?
There, there's a couple of different theories to that. I think there, it's just the number is low as than the amount of psychologists that are out there. But I've been working very closely with Patrick Burnett in his office to up those efforts and get out to universities now to probably bring on more psychologists. We also have interns that we have, that we always try to bring on and hire. But that's, that's something that happens every single year, not here recently. But it is something we're currently working on. It's not something we just accept for what it is, so.
Yeah, I could touch upon that real quickly because it's true across the state.
Yeah.
There's probably two major reasons. Most doctoral, most school psych programs now are doctoral levels. And two, they control the cohort, so it's a supply and demand issue. And, and that really, everywhere I've worked and when I talk to my colleagues, that's the one position that many are contracting out.
The thing that keeps, that though, that, that confuses me is that we are able to contract them out. I mean, so they exist, it's just we're not able to hire them to be full-time in our school system. But somebody is able to hire them to contract them out to our school system. So that's what is leaving me a little confused.
Okay, so I guess my question remains, what was your answer?
No, I was just, I was going to move us on from this topic, should, unless there is any more addition. All right. One of the next areas about possible addition was a discussion about the administrative salary scale of what was being proposed. It was being proposed at a phased level. As I recall, at the work session, there was discussion among the board to possibly accelerate that scale, to possibly ask for this full, all of it in this particular school year. I believe, Mr. Fulmer, you said that would be an increase of $3 million, is that correct?
Correct, 2.9.
Okay, definitely lower, 2.9.
Yeah.
No, 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 don't have the eyes. Was there a feeling among the board that that in favor or of pursuing that? Dr. Warner?
I just have a question. So that's the service sector scale that we're talking about.
Sure.
Not it. The bus drivers have already been brought to the midpoint, is that correct? Their, their pay scale has already been adjusted because we, we were struggling to get them.
Correct.
Those positions filled, correct?
Correct.
So, so this 2.9 million would bring all of our service sector employees up to the midpoint?
Correct, based on their years of experience.
Based on their years of experience.
The target is the midpoint.
In one, in one calendar, one budget year.
The full 4.3 will bring it up in one year, yes.
One budget year. I just, you know, we asked them to wait two years to get them up to the minimum and now we want them to wait three years to get up to the midpoint. It just seems like an awful lot to ask of our service sector employees.
Dr. Chase?
Does service sector include fleet services?
It does, yes, ma'am.
Excuse me? Is there a, what is the appetite of the board concerning that, that particular proposal? Is that something we would like to move forward this year? Would we like to phase? How would we like to move forward?
I, I've always, even while being on the FAB Finance and Budget Committee, suggested that our employees should not just be at the bottom level, but actually, to, to see this gives me a good feeling. And so I am for this increase across the board of 5%.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know whether we'll, you know, we can go across the street and ask. I have no idea what they'll have to say across the street and what we'll bring back and then where, where this will be once we have to sort of reconcile what we get versus what we asked for. But I'm, I'm certainly willing to ask.
And I think if, if everyone feels that this is a reasonable ask, which I believe all of us feel this is a reasonable ask, especially some of those categories in this particular year during COVID have worked extremely hard. At least I know Dr. Chase has mentioned our food service workers. We, some, some of our staff in those categories have worked immensely hard that I know I would be willing to stand and say that that would be, okay. Mr. Fulmer, I don't think that was a surprise that was coming, but I just wanted to give, to increase that. I guess that would go under the service scale enhancements. Is that where that would go instead of the 1.4?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm keeping a tally. I basically have the, we don't have a live spreadsheet that I can share like that, but I'm making the updates as I go. So I can give you a running tally at any time and then we can share where we're at come next Tuesday.
Mr. Fulmer, just a quick question. Didn't the county raise all their employees to the midpoint last year?
Yeah, I believe they finished their implementation of that last year.
Thank you.
In that regard, I know we just talked about transportation. Were there any, I think we raised at the Saturday work session in general of, based on either changing and updating and transportation, were there any either additional positions requested by Mr. Suddath? We know how wonderfully humble he is, but we do know that is an area that we have some challenges as we move forward. So I know we were saying for you to ask again if he, if there was anything, or Dr. Kizner, I can direct it to you as well. Was there anything from transportation that was?
Our, our meeting with transportation did not result in additional position, but for a study for the next year budget to look at different comparison groups, but not, no position changes.
Okay, I, I just know that highlight, that is an area of highlight. And so I think that would be an interesting footnote potentially to add as we do those scales that saying there is a look to study service. I forget what the categories in, in, in that. So that we have kind of made it clear as we continue to study each of our groups. We want to be honest about that. Yes, Ms. Young?
Dr. Kizner, when you talk transportation, are you including for, for the public? In terms of transportation, I think sometimes they think just buses. Are you also referring to like the individuals that are working on, in transportation?
Fleet technicians.
I'm sorry?
The fleet technicians.
Technicians and maintenance?
Yeah, I'm actually talking about the fleet employees.
Okay.
The mechanics, the ones that take care of the buses and trucks and things of that nature.
I, I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that that's what you were referring to. Yes.
Do we include in the extra position that the transportation audit showed that we needed to help? Because I know Barry's been working overtime.
Matter of fact, at your next school board meeting, we will ask you to appoint somebody starting now for remain of the year. Yeah, is that true?
Correct.
Okay, then there were other position, oh, Ms. Healy, sorry.
Speaking of the fleet technicians, I think that would be a good topic to put on three-on-three agenda with the supervisors since the technicians also service the county vehicles and just let them know what we're finding and, you know, what we're proposing for next year. Because whatever we come up with, we will expect the county to, you know, fund the whatever percentage they have of that, you know, that, that service cost.
Yes, good point. We will put that on there. All right. There are other questions and questions about different areas from ESOL to other areas. If any board members would like to bring forward certain positions to request whether either additional or more information from here, either that it wasn't either answered here or if there were certain positions needing to be added, I'm going to open that up for board members to bring forward. I tried to go with the big categories and, and I'll let individual members, if there are certain ones, to add. Dr. Chase?
Thank you. You know, Dr. Kizner, every year I have to point out the, the vacancies in math for middle school and high school. And I don't know if there's any plan for trying to, you know, seven and a half math teachers is a lot of picking up the slack by the other math teachers.
It's, it's a partnership with the school board and community to get our salaries up, to be aggressive in our recruiting, being aggressive in keeping the folks that we have. But I think we've said the story numerous times. Universities up and down 95 and across the state and everywhere, less people are graduating and they're going to go to places that they see as more attractive. And I think we shared with you last year that all the graduates from George Mason University with a math and science degree were absorbed by Prince William Lawton in Fairfax. So if we, we know, we know the need and you know, if you're a young person graduating from college, you're going to go where you think the salaries are most favorable, in most cases, not all cases. So I think our plan gets us closer. But I, I don't want to give you the impression that here from now, I'm going to tell you it's going to look a lot better. But we want to make sure we try our best to keep the people we have, which is why we put more money in certain years where we knew people were leaving to go up north.
Ms. Young?
Yes, this is just a question on my question. I'm trying to figure out how to read it, question five.
Which question?
Question five. I mean, mine's in a group, five through eight is in a group, but then it's sprinkled out around, I know this one. I'm trying to figure out how to read it in terms of, you have the vacancies that are, they're open and then that group adds up to 76.5. And then I was thinking that the same ones are, you're just showing what grade level the vacancies are in. That's 73.5, so it's three down. So I was confused. When you go to the subject assignment vacancies, that's 84.5. And then the coverage is 75.6. So I'm trying to figure out how to analyze the answer. Okay. I just want to know.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll do the math and I'll come back.
Okay.
Something, something went wrong.
Okay.
Then it might have been a formatting because when I took Patrick's chart and dropped it in here, I know his, he might have had some intensive shows that there were subtotals.
Yeah, I just need to know how to read it, that's all.
Yeah. But you're, you're reading it correctly that they should be individually categorized.
Okay.
That question I see also asks for dollar amounts. Are the dollars in here and I'm just missing them?
No, so, so I did not include dollar amounts because it's, one, it's a moving one, moving target. So I guess I could easily just take, hey, what do we budget for each of these positions? Times a full year's budgeted dollar amount salary for them. Obviously, it ranges the base, based on who we hire, what the position is and then how long a position's vacant. So this is a snapshot in time, so looking at it for the entire year. In addition to that, as we, we might have savings if we don't hire and the best example is a math teacher and then we have other math teachers pick up blocks. We're not really saving money there because we're just, we're now paying our current teachers to pick up more blocks and to pick up extra classes so that we can cover that vacant teacher. Or we end up paying a long-term sub. So it gets really complicated of showing, I can show a gross amount, but then we have to back out each of the individual items, which gets more complicated.
Do we have any figures based on the mid-year point? I mean, because I'm talking about what we've had to mid-year. We, we know what we've spent for all of those categories, whether it's paying people extra for taking on extra blocks or the, you know, the subs or, or whatever, based on what we, you know, budgeted. Just trying to think if we're going to have any significant savings or laps from, from all these vacancies.
Yeah, so I covered this last week briefly as well that really here in the next couple of months is when we can really start to project out through the end of the year. Because of all the kind of those examples that I gave and every time we have a teacher out, we have, you know, a substitute that's filling in. And then we also budget about $3 million each year in salary lapse. So we already assume that we're going to have at least $3 million in savings. So until we can really project to the end of the year, that's when we get a more solid number on what our savings are at the end of the year. And there's so many variances as we go throughout the year. It's not really until we get to the last few months of the year that we can get a more definite number.
Well, now that our year is ending in May, does that move up that target period?
It does. So normally, I would come to you all a little bit later in, in the year. But now we have one less accrual month. So, you know, teachers, a lot of our staff are 10-month employees, but they're paid over 12 months. So just because we get to June 30th, it doesn't mean that they're receiving their last paycheck. They actually get it for, it used to be August 1st, September 1st, and October 1st, I think. Or, no, sorry, July, August and September. And now because we've moved the school year up earlier, it's actually only two months of accrual, so it does make it a little bit easier. So it's in that April-May timeframe that we start to get a better number on what we're going to have come June 30th.
All right, any other questions or ads? I am going to be typical and true to form and just make sure that everybody has looked at page seven of our enrollment. I know it's the usual topic, but I will say, please note that our elementary school, since we closed after, at the end of our first semester, when our first semester ended, we had an increase of 65 elementary students from our September 30. Middle school, I would say, is fairly constant. We have lost some in high school, but as many of us know, many high schoolers can graduate early, use those classes. I just draw our attention to that elementary number. Even though we, everyone is saying and, and everything, I, we, we aren't way off, but 65 new students in, let's see, October, November, December, January, over a pandemic, 65 students. So I hope this is something we will continue to keep our eye on. But I know all of us are looking at schools in our districts. We know what building pattern, we know what's going on. I think they are reflected in these numbers. So just something, if you are asked, these are some good numbers to be aware of. I look a lot, the increase at Park Ridge of 30, even Rock Hill, Rocky Run, some. They are increasing and many of the others are not dramatic losses. So I just draw that to all of our attention as we go forward. So I just draw that to all of our attention as we go forward.
As compared to what our projections are for this school year?
For the current school year?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, COVID had an impact on that overall. Our original projections, pre-COVID, had us over 30,000 children for this year in elementary, middle, and high. I don't, off the top of my head, know the breakdown between elementary, middle, and high. But now for next year, we're projecting around 29,750, roughly, enrollment number.
So it's projected to go down next year?
No, it's projected to continue to go up for FY '22. In the current year, we were projecting to go up, but because of COVID, it actually dropped several hundred students. And now during the year, we've actually gained some of them back.
Okay. When, when do you guys typically do your projections with the county and everything, with all the development and all of the equations that you do with how many kids per household and that kind of thing?
Yeah, so I can say Lionel is updating that probably on a daily basis. So I talk to Lionel weekly about those projections. Typically into that October-November timeframe, after we get our September 30th number. I should say more November-December timeframe. End of November is when we're target, when we usually target. For CIP planning purposes this year, we used our numbers from last year because this is such an anomaly year. There's no way to project that. And so what Lionel has been doing is just working on one-year projections for next year, based on where the kids are today, what we're expecting to come back, whether they left for homeschool or private school. Honestly, it's, it's a very tough task this year because there is no historical numbers to look at to say, hey, our three-year average for our eighth-grade cohort is X, and that gives us an idea with these development. Because we've never seen a drop like this across the state. And so projecting that for next year is, is really tough.
So has the county done anything with their projections as far as people who are moving into new houses and moving into the community? Because COVID is not stopping people from moving here. I'm going, I'm driving up and down the hot lanes every day, and I'm seeing Maryland license plates and DC license plates. Because people are moving here. They're, they're here, they've been coming here since the hot lanes were put in. And I, I think I heard that the Board of Supervisors were having a discussion as to whether we really needed another high school or not. So I just, I just want to, just for the record, say that I, I hope that we're not going to go down that path. And while this isn't necessarily budget-related, it's CIP-related. I just want it for the record that we're all here, and this dais here, paying attention to what's being said across the street. And these numbers are significant, not just for this year and for discussion purposes. They're significant because we're going to have, we're going to leave another board with a problem if we don't do something about it soon, so.
If I could just.
I'll be quiet now.
If I could just reinforce what Ms. Hollerbeck said. It's, it's actually somewhat surprising that our elementary numbers did not go down. Because the reason it didn't go down was we actually had a lot of families that did move into our schools and a lot of families that chose not to enter their kids in kindergarten. And, and many chose not to enter in first grade. So what softened our loss has been the kids, people moving down I-95 or wherever they're moving. So we don't see any, you know, that's one of the questions that we've had conversations about. What will kindergarten first grade look like next year? And I think that's still many months away, depending on what model we have. But parents really only get one year at age five to hold a child back. After age six, they have to commit. They could commit homeschool, private school, no, whatever. But at age five, your parent could choose to keep a child out of school. So, you know, we, we see growth. We see growth in a year where people are losing a lot of kids.
Yeah.
And remember, when we got our projections with our actual numbers from September 30, using these numbers, we had 200 more students in high school than we projected. Now, the loss was in elementary, and I would think what my point this evening was, elementary's creeping back up, in my opinion. 65 here, and as Dr. Kizner said, then we look at potential the bubble class of kindergarten and first grade. But I think that's the story I'm trying to, to make. But when we started, we had 200 students more at high school than were projected. So elementary was our loss, and we were kind of asked about that in our joint meeting with, at that seven-on-seven. My comment was, since September 30th, if you are talking to your Board of Supervisor, we have grown in the elementary level, and we expect more. Just going with that story. All right. Any other additions or questions regarding budget-related matters for the work session? All right. Hearing none, then I will close the work session. It will give everybody a moment break to walk around for five minutes. We'll be back here in five minutes, and then we will go and read into closed session.
You can start with.
All right, everybody ready? All right, we will again, we will open our.
Sorry. We will open our special called meeting of the Stafford County School Board which immediately followed our budget work session. We are beginning at about 7:25 on Tuesday, February 16th. Again, I'll start this time on my right. Everyone introduce yourselves please.
Trishah Healy, Rock Hill District.
Irene Hollerback, Aquia.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths, Wide Water.
Susan Randall, George Washington.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood.
Pamela Young, Garrisonville District.
Sarah Chase, Fowlworth District.
We have all members in attendance in the room at Shirley High Middle School this evening, so there no need to authorize any electronic participation. Next, we will move on to approval of the agendas or motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will be going into a closed session to convene. Ms. Randall, can you read us into closed session please?
Yes. I move that the school board of Stafford County convene a closed meeting pursuant to section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia to discuss and/or consider the potential acquisition of real property for a public purpose.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. We are now in closed session. I will invite Mr. Fulmer and I believe Ms.
With the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. By Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certificate certification applies and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered.
What I will ask is each member to state their name and whether they agree or disagree that all provisions were met. Ms. Healy, do you want to just start a state name and agree or disagree?
Patricia Healy, Rock Hill District, agree.
Irene Hollerback, agree.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths, Wildratter, agree.
Susan Randall, George Washington, agree.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood, agree.
Pamela Young, agree.
Garrisonville.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth District, agree.
All are in agreement, this meeting, are there any actions coming out of closed session? Hearing none, we are adjourned, thank you.